I was the guy with the stain on my fingers and then, you know.
You were his, uh, you were his shop. He's just a good man. He's amazing. Of course, he's kind of like, it's kind of like watching, uh, what is it, like The Master Craftsman or something on the TV where they, you know, YouTube can make your nine different tables and put a word in.
He's a perfectionist. He is a perfectionist.
He certainly has the job that's sufficiently, um, equipped and working there.
We'll be down here. I just wanted to show my face and see if the select people were still alive.
Uh, Mike's on, please. Uh, Mike.
Welcome everyone to the Brookfield Select Board Meeting Thursday, April 3rd. Please stand. My pledge is to the flag and the United States of America, a true republic, a Christian nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcements? We no longer have to talk about road plumbing?
Yay. Means I can park on the street again. Yay.
The Brookfield Ecumenical Food Pantry at St. Mary's is seeking donations of condiments, paper products, liquid hand soap, shampoo, and laundry detergent. Items may be dropped off Wednesday and Saturdays from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. at the food pantry at St. Mary's Church at the corner of Lincoln and Howard Streets.
Are they still taking donations at the library as well?
No idea.
I believe so. Yeah. Double check, but they typically during, during, uh, the library regular hours, there's a box in the front lobby. So.
Sign the warrants.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have three before us this evening. We have fiscal year 25-19, which is a withholding warrant in the amount of $86,414.86. Then we have two fiscal year 25-20 warrants. First one is payroll in the amount of $201,836.84. And the second is an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $427,740.90.
All right. Thank you. And item number one, discussion regarding accounting for grant writer, highway admin assistant position.
Yes, and since we are in the midst of our budget season, uh, right now, I guess an outstanding question from an accounting perspective is the hybrid role that Lindsay currently holds as grant writer and highway administrator. Currently for fiscal year 25, Lori, the town accountant, has agreed to pull from just the highway admin account. Her rationale is we do have some overages with regards to that, so it should make it easier to transfer money back and forth within that department to be able to accommodate the, not only the highway admin, but also the grant writer portion of that. However, she said that is certainly not her preferred method of accounting going forward. So a suggestion she has made to the select board, at least to deliberate and discuss, is to, in essence, treat it, instead of the one hybrid position, so almost treat it as two separate positions.
Basically go back to what we were doing, but with a single pay rate. So it's, so if an hour falls on either side of the line, it's, it's not a big fat hairy deal.
Exactly. And that's exactly. Basically let Lindsay present two time sheets, one for highway.
So it's the same rate on each position?
Exactly.
And she puts four hours in for grant writer for the day and four hours for?
Or whatever, or whatever the actual split is.
As needed. Yeah, as required. I mean, like, right now Lindsay's right up to our eyeballs in grant writing, so it would probably be heavy this week for grant writing. But Laura, as Lori indicated, one, if.
Yeah, but there's a certain budget she's got. So she should probably strategically make sure it is.
Exactly. Two separate budgets that are being pulled.
Right. But it, but it means that you also can plan across, like, an annual cycle, right?
Yes.
So Lindsay's been in those roles now for probably right, is it a little over a year?
Not quite a year.
Yeah, I would say not quite a year.
Not quite a year. So it almost has, like, that sense of, like, what's the seasonal cycle for both jobs?
Exactly. Yes.
And so if this is heavy grant season, then it's heavy grant season and getting ready for winter is heavy highway season and we can just figure it out and keep an eye on both budgets, right?
And as Lori also noted, if the beer truck happened to wander by and take Lindsay out, there's no chance of us ever finding a highway, highway admin.
How about, let's use the win the lottery. What if Lindsay wins the lottery? That's what we say at my work. Whenever somebody says, well, what if someone gets hit by a truck? No. What if they win the lottery and they're just not disposed to continue to work?
I think Lindsay would prefer that, yes.
Come on. So.
So that is the, I guess, request and recommendation from, from the town accountant in going forward. So I guess at this point, I shall give the microphone over to the board.
I'll make a motion that we continue the hourly rate and the hours for the highway and then the amount of hours that we set forth roughly, is it, is it 15 hours a week, Lindsay, that you're the grant writer?
No.
I thought it was, like, 12.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say 10.
I thought it was, like, 12.
So is it, okay, so. 20 and 12.
20 and 12, yeah.
Okay. So then I'll, I'll make the motion 20 hours at the highway and 12 at the grant writer position and that we just take from each account so that she's paid accordingly.
Just because I'm really usually very good at complicated motions. Can I recommend a simple one?
No, go ahead. Yep.
And make a motion that we just ask Lindsay to fill out two time cards, one for grant writer and one for highway, for whatever hours are appropriate for the pay period?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discuss vote, item number two, discuss vote on request for multiple appointed positions exemption. Bruce Clark, Ron for you.
Yes, we, just a couple days ago, received a document, which is a package, from Bruce Clark, indicating that he might at least be eligible to be one of the part-time law.
Highway.
He's currently on the Highway Advisory Committee. He'd like to be the employee of the part-time employees of the Highway Department. As such, the concern there is obviously the ethics violations along those lines. But since we are a small town and these types of duty roles are anticipated, the Select Board has the ability to, I guess, have an exemption for lack of a better term, to be able to allow these types of duty roles to undergo their exam from the ethical or financial regulations and rules of the state may have for larger towns.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we appoint Bruce Clark as a special municipal employee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss endorse Apple Country radio contracts.
Sharon's getting several. Love to bring you all back to speed. As we mentioned off several meetings ago, we had some detailed discussion regarding Apple Country radio, inside of contracts, such that the previous station, U123, moves for their operations as well as the bell tower for their replacement. And myself, Mr. Jacob, Jacob, and as you came through, I agree with myself, sat down and hammered out the.
Details of, at least he didn't hit me. We hammered out the final details with regards to the contract. The biggest stumbling block was the insurance, which Sharon was commiserating with the board a couple weeks ago. She was able to find something that was much more to her liking, and I believe at this point, we are all squared away from the insurance aspect. So Sharon, have I left something out?
Uh, no, that's a really good summary. Thank you, Ron. I have documents here. The first one I have, of course, is a draft contract. I have a copy for the board, copy for myself, so that they can be wet copies, I guess is the term you use.
Yes, wet copy.
I obviously will, I'll scan my copy at home and make it digital, so in case anybody wants to see it and they don't have, can't lay hands on the wet copy, they can, they can look at the scanned copy. The other document I have is the certificate of insurance from Hartford.
Yay Hartford.
We have, we've come up with an agreement for them. We're going to pay for the policy premium in 10 payments. And so this is the copy that mentions Apple Country Radio. I also have a change order for the business owner's policy, which is what this is, and it names the town of Brookfield as a, I'm trying to think of the exact term.
Last credit.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Insurance Man. So it documents the fact that they did change this to include the town of Brookfield, and then they issued another certificate with the town of Brookfield's name on it. So I have a copy of that to go with each one of the copies of the license agreement. I've also changed the commencement date of these contracts to today's date, which also happens to be the date that the insurance comes into effect. So it all lines up very nicely. I also have on me a check for two big dollars, one dollar for each of the licenses, and I will give that to Karen before I leave today. And I'll take any questions that anyone has.
So resigning, which she's?
Yes, Karen, yeah, Sharon, because technically, I guess, there's, there's four places for the board to sign. We have a copy for Sharon and a copy for the town for the green room contract, and then also a copy for Sharon and a copy for the town for the mezzanine and antenna contract.
Yeah, but this copy is dated.
Yes.
Oh, hold on.
Yeah, Sharon has the, the latest and greatest.
Okay.
Okay, so she's got them. All right. So I'll make a motion that we endorse the Apple Country radio contracts as presented by Ms. Mahoney.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign my copy and then pass it down the line.
Sure.
Ron, I prepared a space for you to sign too, but that's up to you.
Okay, sure. I'll, I'll make me feel important, I like.
Okay, this is the license agreement for the antenna with the copies of the documents I've already mentioned. And if you want to look those over, feel free. That's why I brought them. Did I sign in the right space there? Yes, I did. Okay. It's been a very busy day for me. And this is the agreement for the green room. And I'll just take that off.
We get Ron?
Oh, we need Ron.
After you just said how important he was.
And if you could pass this down to Karen, I'd appreciate it.
Does this need any signatures or no? Ron?
Just so you know, my next step is going to be talking to Jacob and coordinating our schedules for the fixing up of the spaces and the move. I'm also be notifying the FCC that we will be going silent during the antenna relocation. Whenever that takes place, it will depend on my antenna guy's schedule. And I'm also going to talk to my broadcast engineer and try to schedule some time with him so that he can put together the audio chain when we're getting ready to do it. But the most immediate concern for me is to getting the space spiffed up. And the first thing we're going to do, or first thing I'm going to do is, on behalf of the station, is to refinish the floors, both in the mezzanine and the green room. And I already have a bid. I'm getting, it was from a year ago, however, so I'm getting it updated. And the only other thing is that the Town Hall Improvement Committee had asked that I get a bid ready for the locks that we desired on both the entrance from the ballroom stage, the entrance from the ballroom itself, and the mezzanine door. And I contacted Al Perrington, which was the firm that did all of the locks here in the town hall. And they came up with a price that was fully two fifths of the price for the entire town hall, for three locks.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's insane.
It, that was exactly my sentiment. And that included labor and, and travel because they're from Worcester.
Did you find someone local?
Well, the thing is, I'm totally green when it comes to locks. So I did ask Al Jones if he could come up with another firm that I could bid from. He has yet to get back to me. Undoubtedly, he's very busy.
There's a couple in Spencer, actually. I don't know what kind of reputation they have.
So I plan to go to the Town Hall Improvement Committee and, and ask them in person. I did send an email out, but I understand they've got a lot on their plate, too. But I can't do anything with those spaces until those locks are in place, because I want to protect not only the work we're doing in there, but also the equipment that's going to end up in there. In the meantime, I'm vacating what, what supplies I have in the elementary school, because we did move some of the CDs, the 45 boxes of CDs that were donated to us into the, the space shared with the, with the elementary school cable access studio. I'm in the process of moving all of those to Gavit. I've warned Gavit that this is not going to be permanent. That's just a way to vacate the elementary school. And the other thing I'm going to start doing is lining up volunteers, because we have a lot of stuff to move into those spaces. And not only the, the boxes of CDs, which are, some of which are extremely heavy, but also the broadcast equipment we have. So I've got, I've got a full plate now that this has been taken care of. And I'll entertain any other questions you might have.
No? Good.
I think I'm good and congratulations.
It's been a long haul.
Keep it going.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Discuss approve Brookfield social media policy. Are you coming up with that? Or is this quick? Doesn't matter.
Yeah, Karen just informed me that she's printing out new copies of the social media policy. I think the one. Yeah, so you might be missing the odd pages or the even pages.
Oh, that's awesome.
But while you're waiting to provide background on this, the Communications Committee has drafted the social media policy for your review. This is based upon KP Law's template for the social media policy, and it establishes policies that we can follow to both protect the town from legal action and also to give our community some structure and guidance about how to support our official social media pages. So the modifications that we've made were basically just templating for our purposes and also modernizing some parts of the document, because this template was written at a time where social media services like Delicious and some other really ones from.
Myspace?
Myspace was not mentioned, but we pulled out some of that wording and genericized and updated it where, where appropriate and just cleaned up the wording. But otherwise, their template was pretty good, so we did not really change that. There were a couple of places that called out officials for responsibilities, and we also noted those roles, too. So town administrator does have a call out for, for giving you some, some authority, Ron, per this and.
I am full of importance, so I.
And then also additionally, a member of the Communications Committee will be overseeing this, too. And we designated that as a role, and our intention is to have Chris Drow seen on our committee to handle that, that responsibility.
This last part just jumped out at me. Or the last part of the two-page one. Town of Brookfield's social media content and comments containing any of the following forms of content shall not be allowed for posting. Comments or content not typically related. So basically, you're going to shut off comments.
On official Facebook.
On official Facebook.
Yeah, on other social media.
But then it says profane, obscene, and vulgar language or content is not allowed to be posted. Does that mean the person posting it can't?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what KP Law's document suggested as well. I think there might be some other means that we could engage with the community, but the official Facebook pages are more for disseminating information as opposed to engaging with, with public departments.
Because you think about, I mean, really, as we were forming the Communications Committee, really what we were trying to do is just broaden the net, so to speak, as far as disseminating that information. So it, it's in keeping with their mission and really what we're trying to do and improve communications by pushing the communications out versus engaging in dialogue back and forth, he said, she said.
When we replatform the, the website, we may want to consider at least like a Wiki page, because I know WordPress supports that sort of format where people could just ask questions, but they wouldn't actually appear on the site until a moderator said, yes, this is a question we're posting and we're going to post the answer, sort of a thing.
Yeah, and some other towns do have Wikis, too.
Yeah, like a true Wiki.
Right.
Like, how do I do X?
Right. Residents can contribute content in that format. We could entertain that. That would be something that we would explore within every forum for the website.
Yeah.
But that could be a way that residents could contribute to content in a way that ultimately gets published to the benefit of the town.
Yep. Yep. And it can be a phased publication where they submit, and it's not until it's approved that it actually gets posted.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Be good.
So do we go on there?
We want to read the whole policy. So, I mean, before we vote, we need to at least read the whole thing, but.
Mental telepathy thing just wasn't working.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
What about, and lots that's in here. What about the controls of, like, deleting posts and stuff like that?
Posts should not be deleted. There is a section in there. I don't have a, a copy of it in front of me. But for record retention purposes, posts should not be deleted. There is a section that calls out.
They can be archived. They don't have to be, they don't have to be showing. They just can't still, they just, they don't have to be showing, but we still have to have a copy of the functionally the XML that.
Yeah, some archive of it. There, there's a section that calls out when posts may be modified or, or adjusted if there was some misinformation in there, something misspelled or a date was incorrect or mistakes. Let me see if I can find that section. But the intention is things that are posted will stay up. We're not really going to take down stuff unless there's a, an obligation to do so. Or there's misinformation, like something that was, like, mistyped or misrepresented, and it's corrected, but we would be transparent about that. But mostly in social media, information tends to be timely. This will be for events, announcements. So there really isn't a need to take those things down, because they'll just go down in the feed. If something was posted last year for an event that happened in 2024, well, it'll just get buried in time. We don't got to take it down. Let me see if I can find the section which calls that out. Yeah, that section is on the second to last page, section four, number 10, mistakes. The town of Brookfield policy is that once something is posted, it should stay posted. Only sparing, only spelling errors or grammar fixes should be made without making the change evident to users. If you choose to modify an earlier post, make it clear that you have done so. Do not remove or delete the incorrect content. Provide the correct information and apologize for the error. And then provide some guidelines about how to do that.
Steve, with your interpretation of that, if someone posts something that's incorrect, just factually incorrect, and a change is made, is it sufficient to, one, as Beth had indicated, archive that, yes, a change has been made, but also maybe just put in parentheses, edit it at the end of that particular section?
Yeah, so here it says you can, at least this is from KP Law's recommendation. This is from that template, where they say that you can strike through the error and correct it, create a new post with the correct information, and link to it from the post you previously corrected to clarify. So I think in a scenario like that, if you had a, a post that had an error in it or incorrect information, you could edit that post to say, strike it out, and then provide a link to the latest post which, which corrects it.
Okay.
And really, the goal there is for transparency. Just in case somebody had read that before, they don't want to question, like, was that there before? And now it says something else?
Now, what about, have you talked to, I want to say, like, fire department? Their page is not a town page.
We, we have not talked with other departments. We talked with, with Kyle a little bit on the highway department about, about highway department usage.
Yeah.
Where they have comments, but, and maybe they don't necessarily need comments once we provide some other means for the public to engage with their requests. But no, we haven't spoken with fire, fire department.
A little mail-to form. Is it for highway, a little mail-to form?
Something along those lines, yeah. There will be a form, so residents can, can submit requests and concerns.
But I know, like, the Brookfield community page, it basically says it's not an official page.
Yes, and that's a good clarification.
So when you go to those other groups that kind of look quasi?
Yeah, so this, this social media policy pertains to official Town of Brookfield social media page. pages. There are some unofficial ones, and I think if particular groups want to have comments or do things that are outside of this policy, they could operate as an unofficial page, per my understanding. This would just be purely for those that are following the guidelines of our policy and brand themselves as official Town of Brookfield social media pages. Because there are some that might benefit from that level of community engagement based on their audience. Like, I know that Brookfield Seniors, which is handled by Council on Aging, they have comments. They're a private group. They may not necessarily abide by this policy, but they, Brookfield Seniors may not be brought under the umbrella of an official Town of Brookfield social media page. It's more of a community page for their group, as opposed to something that's official.
Official municipal page.
Right. So I think it's important to make that distinction for some groups that do not abide by this policy. They just will not be official.
Okay.
So.
So I'll make a motion that we accept it as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you for your work.
A lot of good work.
Well, thank Chris. He's not here, but Chris Drossene, this is his forte. Social media is my poison.
Item number five, Ward Town Report Printing Job. Did we want to just, did you want to talk on it?
The same one that we tested, and he has country press.
Country press.
And he paid $5 under our budget, because we don't know why the budget was reduced last year.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the country press bid at $1,295 for the town report.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it looks like we have a resignation for Carol Plum from Town Hall Improvement Committee.
I'll make a motion that we accept her resignation with regrets and send her a thank you note, because she's done a lot for the town in general.
She seems to always be on some committee volunteering where she can, so I agree. So I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, discuss Highway Liaison Report.
Just a real quick update. Had a couple of discussions with Kyle about how things are going. So he's got, he's doing some work in support of the Kimball Street Grant Project. They're going to be doing some investigation of the substructures and working with the engineers to make sure we address any of the catch basin aspects of the reconstruction appropriately. So that works planned. I think he's bringing in a contractor he's going to be working with. That is going to be part of the town contribution to that particular grant, so cover that information. And he's been starting to meet with all of the, or at least some potential contractors that'll be in support of the Gay Road project, trying to make sure that we're properly scoping and ensuring we're in a good position to kick that off once the season really hits. So in other aspects, he's really trying to set, I would say, a fresh culture down with the highway team and build some, you know, very explicit expectations for how to interact with the public, how to interact with each other. So a lot of positive change, so I appreciate that and that work. So, and you're smiling, because I think you've seen quite a bit of it, Mr. Tapped, so.
Yeah, I'm impressed with the strides that you've made in short time, along with trying to deal with one or two or three ice storms a week, 24 times.
Yeah. Yep, so. But those are the highlights, since we're on a pretty tight schedule this evening, so.
No, we have plenty of time.
We have plenty of time?
We have a half hour.
I don't know that I have a full half hour of content. So, but.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing, and I've called Bruce and I talked to Don, I mean, I don't, I'd assume you guys have been down there, but.
Yeah.
It is looking a lot cleaner and organized.
I mean, it's cleaner, it's more organized, in spite of the fact that it's been a revolving door. And I think one of the things we need to work on is the fact that, and this is not in any way to restrict access of the citizens, but, you know, if we can encourage folks to call ahead so that there's like, it's easier for him to plan his day, that would be great. I'd love to get the website set up so that people can submit if they've got like, you know, report your pothole type stuff. I think that would help, because then it puts Kyle in a place where he can actually plan his work.
I believe that's on the, yeah.
Can I ask you on the phone?
Yeah, would you?
Super quick.
Kyle joined us for the Communications Committee yesterday, and one of his agenda items was report a concern for residents. So in speaking with Jake, our current plan is to implement a Microsoft form where residents can submit concerns, and those form submissions will be emailed to Kyle, so he can check in on them. And Jacob recommended this, because Microsoft Forms is standalone. We can link to it from our current website as it stands.
Nice.
And then we can also port it over to the site Rebuild, once that's done. So there will be no loss of this form support, given where we currently are and where we're going.
That's originally what I wanted to do.
Yeah, well, and that makes it.
But you could do it on the old Civic Plus.
You, yeah. Well, you can't do it on Civic Plus, but we always could have linked out to it.
No, there was an issue, I think, with putting a form on there, with Civic Plus.
I think it's possible, but that ship has sailed.
Yeah, there was an iframe issue.
Oh, got it. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so since that just came up, we do have a plan in place, and we're planning to have that up within the next month.
Great.
So we're on it.
I know in conversations with Kyle, the one thing, and it's not directly related to this, it's more for the board, right? Anytime we can possibly redirect, like, if someone comes to us as selectmen, right, I always will pick up the phone if somebody reaches out to me about something, and I'll pass the information along. But if we can start to build that relationship and trust with the rest of the community by referring them to Kyle directly, if the citizen is comfortable, like, just talking to him directly, I think historically, we've had less communicative or less customer service-oriented highway superintendents. So I know we need to get you out of the office and on the road as much as possible, but I think they can leave a message, if worst-case scenario, if they don't get with you directly. And so long as we're returning phone calls, I think it would be, you know, kind of great for him to have the opportunity to build that with the community. So take the call, take the note, but see if, you know, as part of the closing on the call, until we get people conditioned to reach out to Highway directly, just see if we can refer them, hey, you know, not to, and it's not to make people call twice. Like, if they get cranky about it, obviously, we would pass the message along. But try to at least start conditioning people to just reaching out to them directly.
I mean, he's certainly approachable and will certainly welcome the input from whoever.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's a big plus.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Item number eight, approve Select Board Meeting Minutes, 3/13/25, two sets, 3/20/25.
I'll make a motion that we approve 3/13/25 and two sets of 3/20/25.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess we're recessing for 25 minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, I can say that, I know you too.
You should still have the motion for the executive session.
All right, well, so why don't we do that? Why don't we go into executive session and recess from there? Okay, so I make a motion that we move to enter executive session under exemption number one, to discuss reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints of charges brought against a public official employee, staff member, or individual, and we will not, we will adjourn from executive session, not to return to open.
So the only thing is, we'll need to make sure that the individual wants executive session, right? Versus.
Well, we're about to make the motion, so then if the individual wants it to be an open.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure this goes. I'll second that motion.
All right.
Any discussion? And roll call vote.
Jay F. Aye.
Kadoski, aye.
Kaufman, aye. So, and then I guess we'll, we've got, but do we need to recess till 8 o'clock since it was posted to that? All right. So I'll make a motion that we recess until 8 o'clock?
I'll second.
All in favor?
You go second, I'll see.
Kadoski, aye.
Jay F. Aye. Sorry about that, aye.
[inaudible]